Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first item on the agenda is student reports. Do we have any student reports tonight? None tonight? Thank you. Hearing for visitors. Any visitors wish to be heard? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman.
Down to the mic, please. Give your name for the record.
Craig Fritz, assistant baseball coach up at David Prowdy. We seem to be having an issue going on with a baseball clinic that we use for fundraisers that was supposed to be trying to get flyers out last Friday, and there was no approval by the superintendent or the school committee, I'm not sure who was doing what, or what the misunderstanding was. So we're trying to get an explanation on what's going on, or is there a reason why it was not approved and got the flyers out before Monday, which it was supposed to start at?
Okay, this is...
I don't know who...
You're free to make a statement and stuff.
No, I'm just trying to find an explanation. If somebody could explain what's going on to us, there's quite a few people here that are extremely interested in the answer, or an explanation, or a solution to the problem.
Okay. I think that's all you've got to say?
Right now, yes.
Is there anyone else that would like to be heard? Okay, seeing none. This issue has been brought to the attention of the Chair by the superintendent. I could not provide the proper answers to the questions that were being asked. We have contacted legal counsel, and I'll defer to Mr. Moskus, the school counsel at this point, to address where we're at.
Mr. Chairman, as you indicated, the superintendent was giving a program to approve, and it's unclear in this program whether this is a private program, or whether this is a district program, and that there is no, we could not find any authority from the school committee for this clinic to charge students fees. Under Massachusetts law, the school committee would have to authorize charging of students of fees. And to our knowledge, there is no record, any vote of the school committee to provide a $70 charge. So I'm recommending that this committee refer to the administration for a report relative to the legal status of this clinic, and that the comptroller, and the principal, and legal counsel give advice relative to how this program is operated, who collects the funds, where do the funds go, is this a private entity, or is this a district entity, and what compliance has been with the rules of this district relative to, if it's a district program, relative to that program. So these questions are important because, one, is a question of liability relative to if we're allowing a private program to use public resources, and secondly, this district is under oversight by the Commonwealth, and we need to follow the fiscal procedures that the Commonwealth has established, and there's a question of whether those fiscal procedures have been followed. So it's unfortunate that the superintendent was given this request just before the clinic started. It should have been, this request should have come in advance, so that these questions could have been answered, and the clinic could be operating. So it's regretful that there wasn't a planning on this regard, and that the principal was not consulted, and if it's a district program, the principal was not requested to approve the use of the building for this particular clinic. So there are many questions, and it would not be appropriate for the clinic to be allowed to go forward without the liability and the fiscal procedures being properly in place.
Thank you, Mr. Moskus. So having heard that, it would be, the Chair's intent to ask the Board for a motion for a report to be done by the superintendent, the comptroller, and to be reviewed by the legal team and reported back to the committee. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Angela. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Cludier. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. All right, next item, secretary's report. Approval of the minutes of January 20th, 2015. Any additions or deletions, otherwise a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion made by Vinnie. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next, approval and retain the minutes of executive session of January 20th, 2015. If there's no additions or deletions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Cludier. Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Ethier.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Approval of the minutes of the special budget meeting of February 4th, 2015. Any additions or deletions, otherwise a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Angela. Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Last approval of the minutes of the special budget meeting of February 5th, 2015. Any additions or deletions? If not, a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Angela. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Next item, financial report. Approval of the expenditure report. Mr. Suda, do you have anything to add, other than the report that was put in everybody's packet?
There are a few line items that need transfers to be approved, and I'll have those at the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll have them for the month.
All right. Any questions from any members in regards to the packet, the information that was in your packet? None?
You want a motion on this?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Cludier. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Napton. Need further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Unfinished business update from the Budget Subcommittee. The Budget Subcommittee has been meeting with the principals, the superintendent, and the comptroller, and we went through all of the requests that came from all of the principals and other department heads, and during the course of our meetings, we made a decision from the Subcommittee's standpoint as to what we thought that the committee would be interested in supporting. We've asked the comptroller to put together a list of those items that we are supporting, and the appropriate amount of money that it's going to take to put them in place, and you'll find that in the first page of the packet that's been submitted by the comptroller. We're going to go through these items individually, one at a time, and we're going to ask for input from the full Board, and that would be the Chair's intention to have a vote on every one, so that everybody can weigh in equally as to whether they want to support this or not, because at the end of the day, you'll see the numbers that are in the packet. We don't have sufficient revenue at this point, and so we're going to have to... Gary, has everybody been given a packet?
No, I don't have one.
Nope. It would start with this? Okay. There you go. When you have them, let me know, and we'll start... Before I start going down these individually, Mr. Suda, is there anything that you'd like to address? Do you want to make your presentation on the custodians?
Yeah, sure. First? Sure. You might need to pass those down as well. So one of the things I was asked to do is to review the custodial budget, and not only the salaries and wages, but the utility costs that go along with that as well. And you'll notice that, and I should start off by saying that most of these numbers were generated by Julie, who did that, you know, before I took over. So I've reviewed the numbers with her, and for the most part, you'll see there's substantial decreases in electric and heating, and heating is mostly the oil cost. And her reasoning on that was the price of oil has come down, she had her reasons for doing what she did, and she feels that the current year's budget is going to leave some money in that line item. So those were the reasons that she lowered those estimates.
Okay.
And at this point in time, I don't see any need to change that unless we feel as a community that oil prices are going to skyrocket again, but we may want to revisit that, you know, as time goes on. So for the most part...
But doesn't our contract for oil ends this year? Or will we be going out to bid?
It does, well, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. And then electricity, we also have a contract with a third-party supplier that takes us through the next school year and into the fall of the next year. So we're locked in on those rates as well. So we think that the estimates that are in the budget for '16 for electricity should be sufficient for those line items as well. And every, all of the other line items seem to be pretty constant. There are no changes.
Okay.
Water and sewer, there's a few changes here and there, but for the most part... And so custodial salaries and wages, we pretty much left everything as-is, except when, we'll talk about this, the Budget Subcommittee decided to support adding a full-time, or taking a part-time custodian at the high school and making it a full-time position. I think there's a lot of need for more coverage at the high school level. There's a lot going on there, and just in the short time that I've been here, I can see the need for this position to happen. So I've added $31,000 into the budget for that custodial position. We also have a couple of retirements coming up in the next several months, so we think that we'll be hiring some new custodians to replace the retiring ones, and we think there's an opportunity to work with the building principals and maybe redeploy some of those newer, the new custodians in a different way to get a better result than what we're trying to do. It's been difficult. They're all working, you know, trying to do more with less, and I think we're going to have to look at a different way of deploying those, that manpower, to get things done. So we really didn't change much in the custodial budget, except for the full-timer at the high school. Everybody else stays as-is with, you know, full or part-time, but for the most part, it is, the custodial positions seem to be understaffed
Yep.
...in most of the schools.
Okay. Is it?
Yeah.
Any questions from any members in regards to Mr. Suda's report?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nodkis?
Under David Prowdy, it says increase .5 custodial to full-time. So is this my understanding, you're going to go to a full-time from a part-time? Is that why it says .5?
Right. Right.
So why wouldn't you just put down four, just count to five and put down full-time custodial? Why would you put .5?
Well, because the, what Mr. Bayshant brought up was that he's got three part-timers, so they're going to take one of those part-timers and just make it a full-time. So we just wanted to show that we're not adding a full-timer and keeping three part-time. We're going to end up with two full-timers and two part-timers. So we're not adding an additional position. We're taking one and just converting it to full-time.
We're not adding a full, we're not adding an additional full-time position. We're adding a half-timer to a full-timer. Anyone else have any questions? Okay. Dr. Crowe, your issues are also in the first page we're going to review. Would you like to just give us a recap of what you're requesting?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
The budget priorities for me this year, from an instructional standpoint, are varied. The first one is that we need to restructure the organization to free up a person that is currently doing 12 separate positions, Ms. Seleski. If you look on the DESI website, you'll see that she's listed for a variety of positions. It's humanly impossible to do so, so I'm asking for that to be separated into a Director of Academic Affairs, Accountability, and Grants, and the second part, an additional position of Director of Special Education, and separating some of the roles out, which will be an ask of probably $90,000 or $95,000 to add that position for the administrative role. We need that in the district in order to do a variety of things, but it's certainly, to Ms. Seleski's credit, that she's been doing all these roles for this long, but it's time to separate them. I'm also asking, and I have some statistics to give you in relation to this, the district-wide professional development is pitifully lacking in Spencer East Brookfield, and in order to move this district forward, I feel very strongly, and I've actually spoken to the union president about this, about the need to provide some professional development for the instructors here, as well as the paras and administration. So currently, there's only about $50,000 allocated for PD across the district, giving us a per pupil expenditure of only $28, which comparing to the state average, which is I've done some comparisons with other school districts in the region, and we're woefully under even the lowest ones. So I'm asking for another $130,000 to bring us up to only half the state average. I'd love to go to full state average, but I realize that in one year, that's going to be very, very difficult considering the circumstances in Spencer East Brookfield, so I'm really looking for the $130,000 increase to get us to at least half the state average. That would be used specifically for a variety of things. I'd like to list those now, just so the public knows what those entail. I would be looking at doing content and instructional strategies, best practice training for content teams at the various grade levels, so I would be looking at some tiers. Pre-K to 2 would be one of them, 3 to 5 would be another, 6 to 8, and then 9 to 12, and specifically in math, science, ELA, social studies, and then the arts, PE, and the others. The second, that would be about $90,000 of that, and that would be ongoing over the course of the year. Those teams would meet on a regular basis in order to align curriculum and discuss best practices and instructional strategies. The second piece is about $15,000. It's for probably two or three days in August. It's for data institute teams and training, and what that will be is that the building-based data teams from each of the buildings with high-stakes testing, as soon as we get those preliminary results, we want to delve into those, we want to analyze those, and then we want to formulate a plan to go forward for the year, so that we're not wasting any time in the fall trying to get ready. We're already ready to go when the buses arrive. Those building-based data teams, while Lake Street would not have preliminary scores because they don't do MCAS, we would add another team in September for that building to also have its own data team, and those data teams would then meet on a regular basis to monitor benchmarking during the school year to move us towards our goal. The last one is curriculum development. That, again, is ongoing. That will be from July through, of 15 through June of 16, and that is for discipline-specific teams, and it's for the vertical and horizontal alignment specifically, and then also the development of standard-based projects and field trips for every single grade level. So that concludes the district professional development. The last one is for ASOP management software. There's a strong need in this district for getting more efficient at how we collect and record staff attendance and assign substitutes, and also link it with payroll, and this is a way to do that, and that would be about $7,000. I've been negotiating with that group, and I've gotten them down to about $7,000 at this point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Crowe. Any questions for Dr. Crowe before we go through these line by line? Mr. Nodkis?
You got any idea where this money is going to come from for these appropriations?
We're going to deal with the revenue side later. We'll go through all of the requests first. Every member will have an opportunity to vote yes or no, whether they support it or not. We're working towards a preliminary number for the budget, and we have very little for revenue numbers at this point, and they won't be coming forward for probably another week and a half or so before we'll have a better handle on that. So right now, this is just to get the, for the superintendent, for the comptroller, to get the gist of where the Board wants to go, what direction we want to be looking in the services that we want to provide and stuff. So having said that, if you start with your first page, I'm going to go through the items that the Subcommittee approved, and then after we go through that, then we'll have the comptroller go through the rest of the budget presentation to us, and then we can ask any questions we may have of him as we go through that. The first one, the superintendent already referred to, the ASOP software. As she explained, this will bring a higher level of accountability for tracking personal days, sick days, vacation days, assigning substitute teachers, and a host of other items that it will do for central office. She's got that negotiated down to $7,000. What's the feeling of the Board in regards to supporting that? Any comments? Yes?
You want a motion, or...
Either a motion or is this comments first, or a motion?
I think it's an important piece of the puzzle to try to bring us into compliance with substitutes, with people taking time off, with payroll. It's a way to get us into compliance and make it a lot easier and more efficient for our record-keeping, so I certainly support it.
All right, so you make that as a motion, Mr. Cludier.
A motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Messier. Now further discussion? Any questions on it? If not, we're going to take a roll call vote on all of these. Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Now the next item, this is the additional academic affairs position that the superintendent explained, her rationale for trying to split some of these tasks that are now being handled by one person. There's also some additional benefits that she has spoken about to me in regards to this position. We had some issues in the past with MCAS and the way that it was administered, some of the other tests that have to be administered district-wide would all be things that this person would have the responsibility of oversee, in addition to the items that the superintendent mentioned. So is there a motion for approval for that?
So moved.
Motion by Angela. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. Now further discussion, questions in regards to it? Mr. Nodkis?
Just ask a question. Is this having to do with writing grants?
The question is, does this have anything to do with grants? Yes, it does.
So this person would be writing grants?
Dr. Crowe, would you care to address this?
I would. It, it's, there will be some that come under special education, that is specifically special education grants, the entitlement grants, but that this person will be responsible for writing, implementing, and managing the other grants.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
I have a comment.
Angela? Yes.
Which I think is a long time coming, and it's just to say thank you to Karen, because going through the superintendent's search, I really did learn that she does wear a lot of hats, and there was so much shock from almost everybody that applied for the job here at how much is being done in that position, and I just want to publicly recognize the work that Karen's done for us, the amount of money she's raised for us, the amount of balls she has in the air at all times, that she has been able to keep moving and not dropped, and I just want her to know that I'm very impressed, and I'm very, very glad to see that she's going to get some much-needed relief, because I do not want her to burn out and leave us.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, Karen. Any further questions in regards, Mr. Nodkis?
I just want a second. I was also in the search, and I just want a second. What Angela said concerning Dr. Seleski, she's wearing all these hats, and I just want to say, I, I was second when Angela said, she's right on the ball.
Thank you. Any further questions? If not, on a roll call vote. Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. The next item comes from Joyce Nelson, principal of Knox Trail. She made a presentation of the need for an additional clerical help, .7 person she has now, would like to move that person to full-time. There's some additional duties that have been added to the school because of move-in 504 plans with pupil services being moved back to each school, so there's going to be additional clerical work that has to be done there, and also in regards to guidance department, there'll be extra work that will have to be done there as well. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Kurt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further discussion or questions in regards to that? Not on a roll call vote. Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next issue comes from Mr. Bayshant. It's the change in numerical grading. It's a cost of $1,000. My understanding from the principal and the superintendent, this is the way that the grading is going. It's more accurate, so we can get a true picture as to what's going on when we do all these assessments. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Kurt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. Further discussion? All those in favor on a roll call vote. Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item, Mass Insight Education AP Program. Again, this comes from the high school. It's a cost of $10,000. Dr. Crowe, I'm going to allow you to give us a brief overview of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Mass Insight Education AP Program is more commonly referred to as the Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative in the state, and it's an attempt to boost both participation in AP courses, as well as to do a lot of professional development with teachers, and what we have found in districts across the state that are, that have already adopted it, is that it raises the rigor across the entire system, not just in the high school.
Okay.
And just, oh, I'm sorry, one thing I could add, that the $10,000, basically, we're putting $10,000 out on an initial investment, but we're really getting about five or six of that back in terms of materials, professional development, et cetera.
Okay, so the initial investment is $10,000. We recoup almost half of that back once we're into the program. Anyone have any, well, first, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Kurt. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Now, any further discussion or questions? No? On a roll call vote. Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item, again, from Mr. Bayshant. This is a NEASK. This is the organization that comes out and credits the high school. It's still not going to happen for a couple of years, but as was explained to me, is we have to foot the expense to put these people up, to feed them, to house them, and this is a small portion of the cost, as I understand it.
We have to prepare.
We have to be...
For the visit.
Prepare for the visit. So it sounds like something we have to do, with not too many options here. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mike. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. Any further questions or discussion? On a roll call vote. Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Next item comes from Wyre Village. To add one fourth-grade classroom teacher at a cost of $55,000.
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item comes from Wyre Village. To add one fourth grade classroom teacher at a cost of $55,000. Dr. Crowe, I'm going to refer to you with explanation on this.
Ms. Stanland provided adequate verification. I believe that the enrollment is going to be such that we absolutely need to add that teacher in order to accommodate the class sizes. I believe the enrollment was at 116 projected, so that eliminates the need to have overcrowded classrooms. And she does have the physical space.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. Any further discussion or questions in regards, Mr. Nodquist?
On this classroom, how many fourth grade teachers would there be in Wyre Village Superintendent?
Be five.
It would be five.
That would be the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item, David Prowdy, increase a half-science teacher to full-time. Currently, right now, we have a part-time chemistry teacher. We are a comprehensive high school. We haven't been providing full-time chemistry. There was a lot of reasons for that. The person that's going to be in the position right now was the chemistry teacher and has retired out. The position is being posted by the principal in hopes that we'll be able to find a full-time person for September. Is there a motion for approval for that?
Motion.
Motion by Kurt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. Further discussion or questions in regards to it? Seeing none, on a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item from David Prowdy, to add in a school suspension monitor. Dr. Crowe, I'll let you give the explanation on this.
New regulations were passed that students who are suspended must be provided with educational opportunities that needs to be so that they keep pace with their peers. So, the days of suspending students and simply sending them home, those are gone. So, this is an attempt to have a person who'll be monitoring the in-school suspension so that students can continue to get the work from the teachers and keep up with their classes so as to not lose any valuable instructional time.
Thank you. In addition to that, it's my understanding in speaking to the principal in a subcommittee meeting that this person would also be utilized as a substitute teacher when there weren't kids at the in-house suspension so that there would be some savings going along with that position when it wasn't being utilized for suspension. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Motion by Angela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Any further questions or discussions? Mr. Nodquist?
I think you brought up in the last meeting, if there's a person at a different school, would that person be involved with that person or is this only for David Prowdy?
Well, there's some discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Crowe, is it district-wide?
It would primarily, we wouldn't mix the grades all the way down, but we would certainly utilize the junior high as well at Knox Trail as well as the high school.
Because I think that was brought up and to have some, if there's no suspension at the high school this particular day, what's he do? So, if there's somebody else, I think that he should step up and take care of that one, like the chairman said.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, on a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item, halftime sped teacher at Knox Trail. I'll ask Karen, do you want to give a brief explanation on this? I'm just asking to do this because there's caseload issues here and stuff and just give us the real shot version.
Right, so, short and sweet. Knox Trail, when the budget cuts happened last year, we lost a position, a .5 position. And so, currently, we are building a life skills program across the district, which we have to to be in compliance with coordinated program review. So, that takes away from the inclusion setting. And so, we're asking for the .5 to supplement the inclusion setting because they are short-staffed.
Okay, just stay right there, and we'll do the others in a minute. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Angela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. Further discussion or questions? Anyone? None? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I'm sorry.
Chairman, just before you take a vote.
Oh, Kurt, I'm sorry.
Is this a part-time or what? .5? Is this a part-time or full-time?
It'll be increased, if I may answer, it'll be increasing .5 to a full-time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next issue again from Pupil Services, a speech pathologist. Karen, would you give us a?
Coordinated program review compliance issues in examining the caseload and sending the caseload to the reviewers. Despite the restructuring of the caseloads, it still was not acceptable. And so, they have mandated the district to do something about that, and staffing is an issue. They've asked me to, again, look at the caseloads, and I can't change the caseloads. The students are identified as having that need. So, therefore, I did inform the state that I would put it on the school committee budget request.
Just for clarity, are all these items that are coming under requests from you all state-mandated?
The majority. I mean, with the restructuring and programming, not so much. But I'd have to hear you individually go through for me to identify specifically what's CPR and what's district need.
Okay, why don't we do that on?
Okay.
Go through just so they'll know which ones are state-mandated and which ones we may be able to have further discussion on. Any further questions on that? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kurt. Further questions or discussions? Seeing none, on a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, the next is pupil services, halftime reading coach. Karen, give us an explanation.
Halftime reading coach is to supplement the fact that there's no reading instruction primarily at East Brookfield Elementary. This would be a district position that would collaborate with the Wyre Village Title I reading instructor. And the way I envision the position is servicing primarily East Brookfield, although it would be called upon in other areas of need throughout the district if need be. But that's why, because we are lacking for that service because East Brookfield is not identified as a title school.
Okay, not a state-mandated?
Not a state-mandated, that's a district request.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Want a further discussion or comments? Roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next position, certified ELL instructor. Karen, want to give us?
That is a coordinated program review requirement. We do not have a certified ELL instructor in the district, and right now, I'm responding to corrective action, which is due next week with some difficulty because I don't have that instructor. So, that is a definite CPR item and a definite need because us, kids need that service ASAP.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Kurt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, on a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Next, district-wide from the superintendent, professional development, $130,000. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. Further discussion or questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nodquist?
Is this mandated by the state?
Dr. Crowe?
No, it is not.
Any further questions or comments?
Thank you.
On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I think we're all set, Karen.
Thank you.
Next item from East Brookfield, increase in teaching supplies. Mr. Tomlin had made his request, and it's one of the few things that he's asked for, and it was very clear that he is shot and needs these supplies. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. Any further discussion or questions? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next request from the high school, increase in music supplies, $7,500. This program is done by Becky Bucia. Probably has one of the fastest-growing student enrollment of kids participating. And the great thing that I've seen in interacting and watching what she does is she goes after those kids that aren't participating in things, and she grabs them and she gets them involved, and she actually gets them into doing things and liking it and participating further in other areas of her program. So, we haven't put a lot of money into this program over the years, and I think they just had a performance out at, I think it was Shepherd Hill. They placed first place with their choir and got best performer award and really doing a terrific job, and the kids are getting a lot out of it. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Kurt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Any further discussion or questions? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item from the high school, robotic supplies, $13,500. Some of us had gone through a year, a year and a half ago, and we were taken through the school and shown what was taking place in that department, but they didn't have everything that they needed to really be able to step it up and bring us to the next level. I'm not sure that this amount will, will this allow us, Dave, to offer a full robotics class or is it just?
Starting point.
It's a starting point, okay. Again, it's another one of those hooks that we like to have out there that, you know, for many different reasons, it might be something that strikes a chord with several students and just, it may be another issue that helps us to keep some students from moving out of district and stuff. So, that cost is $13,500. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Kurt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. Further discussion, questions? Heather?
Would it be possible to have a presentation of this program at some point at a school committee meeting? Somebody come in just to give us an overview?
We can arrange that maybe at our next meeting. If you could have Paul come in and do some type of a presentation for us, that would be, that would be good, yeah. Any other questions or comments in regards to it? If not, on a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next, I'm sorry, Karen, there is another one. Sped professional development, $27,000. Could you give us an overview for that?
Sure, that includes professional development for my department as well as restraint training, which is pretty extensive for the district. And I think that's it. I believe that that's primarily the reason.
State-mandated?
Yeah, the restraint training, absolutely. And then professional development within our department, both for myself and for members of, different members of my department through all the different specialties.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Kurt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Heather. Any further questions or comments? On a roll call vote, Heather?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Vinnie?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kurt? They now have a halftime adjustment counselor and making the request to move to full-time. Karen, would you like to address that?
Yes, so currently we have a... We were cited in the coordinated program review for not having enough emotional behavioral support at the elementary level, and that is part of the reason for the request. So right now we have one full-time who is shared between Lake Street and East Brookfield, .5, .5... I mean, sorry, Lake Street and Wyre, .5 and .5. And so they're asking for increased support with that one full position. We'll give both buildings the full-time support.
And again, is that a mandated?
That is... The social... Well, they don't state specifically that you have to have a school adjustment. They're asking how we're addressing it. So I'm doing it through programming as well as through the request of the increased adjustment council, which will allow for oversight in those programs.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Further questions or discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nodquist.
Would you please state that again? You're gonna take the... You're gonna move that between two schools?
Right now, we have one person who is moving between schools, so with the addition of this position, there won't be movement. We can have one person at each school.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Vinnie.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Same request for Lake Street School, Karen?
That's the same scenario. It would allow a full-time person at each building.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Angela. Further questions or discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Vinnie.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Halftime guidance adjustment counsel for the high school. Want to give us the overview on that, Karen?
Sure. So at the David Proudy High School right now, we have 2.5 guidance. We have no adjustment at the high school whatsoever. I did write a grant, and I'm hoping for that grant to come through, but even if that grant comes through, that grant person, the social worker, will be divided between Knox Trail as well as David Proudy and will be directly involved with the programming that I'm trying to build at the secondary level. So with the increase of that support, that will allow David Proudy to have directed intervention. Right now, we only have a school psychologist who's doing all of the testing and trying to do crisis intervention, and we are struggling to get that done the way we need to get it done. So that position would allow for college and career readiness and outreach and bridging that gap and making the connection, but it would also allow for social, emotional, and crisis intervention at David Proudy High School primarily.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Angela, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Mike. Further questions or discussion? On a roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Vinnie.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next item, high school increased halftime custodian to full-time. Mr. Clouty, would you care to address this? You had brought this issue up about trying to move to full-time custodians.
Right, one of my budget initiatives were to try to get us to move our staff over the next few years from part-time to full-time. And as Mr. Suter alluded in his overview at the beginning, this would take one of the part-time custodians at the high school, and it would make it a full-time position. So it moves in that direction. It's gonna take time to get us there, but I think it's the right thing to do, to, you know, try to preserve the assets that we have in the district.
Yep. Okay, is there a motion for approval?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Kurt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Any further discussion or questions? On a roll call vote, Heather.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Vinnie.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Kurt.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, I know that all that made us feel real good. The bad news is that totaled seven-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars. And to Kurt's question, how's this gonna be paid for? The bad news is we don't have that answer just yet, and we won't until the numbers are developed over the coming week to ten days. But I think this was an important exercise for the board to go through so that we can give some direction to the superintendent and to the comptroller as to the direction we would like to see the district moving in. Once the comptroller is able to put together revenue numbers for us in the next seven to ten days, it's gonna require us probably coming back to another meeting on the 24th because they'll have to be... Hopefully not, but unless there's some monies that we're able to identify, we may have to look at some consolidations, eliminations, or cuts from some of the new requests that we're coming up with. In addition to those positions that we're talking about bringing to full-time, there's an additional cost of ninety-two-thousand-four-hundred dollars to provide benefits to those positions. So to Vinnie's point, although we want to be moving forward to full-time positions in the custodial department, we've got to take it one bite at a time and move from school to school and get it done over a course of time. So that's the... Those are all the recommendations that the subcommittee has come with. It's now been voted and approved by the full board, so Dr. Crowe and Mr. Suter now have some direction to move forward in the next few days. Mr. Suter, would you care, at this point, to go over the rest of the packet that you submitted to us and just hit the points that you'd like to highlight?
Sure. So I would just caution everybody that we're still early in the process, and I'm still early in the position. So the numbers at the bottom of that page, when you look at the increase from fifteen to sixteen, I wouldn't necessarily equate that to an increase in what we're gonna pass on to the community at this point. We still need to look at the revenue. It's the governor, because he's newly elected, hasn't released any numbers yet. We don't expect them until early March, and we need to look at other funding sources that we have in-house at the time. So if you start at the top, the 2015 column, those are the amounts that were appropriated for the fiscal year that we're in now, and that totals up to twenty-four million, six forty-five, four thirty-three. And then, applied to that number, we used the revenue sources that I've listed below to offset the cost of some of those items up above. So we had a teacher quality grant of forty thousand dollars that we applied to the twenty-four million. We used a hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars of school choice revolving money. We have a two-forty grant that we used, five-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty dollars. We had a kindergarten grant of fifty thousand dollars that we applied to the budget preschool revolving account. We used a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars of that and an early childhood grant of twenty-five-thousand-five-hundred. So we used just shy of a million dollars to apply to our twenty-four-million-dollar expenditure budget, netting us down to the twenty-three-million-six-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-three-hundred-ninety-five-dollar budget that we have today. So we're trying to make an attempt to show all the revenue sources. It's been confusing. I know it's been confusing to me and to the general public. There's always been thought that, you know, there's money that gets applied to the budget from other outside sources. So this is my attempt, and first pass, I'll admit, to show exactly what we're using and what we intend to apply to the budget. So as we go through the fiscal sixteen column, you can see that the appropriations total twenty-six-million-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. That's an increase of a million-three-fifty-six over the year that we're in now. And these numbers that I've listed below as other revenue sources, I can't take credit for that. These are numbers that Julie put together in anticipation of funding this budget. So she's allocated seventy-five-thousand dollars of school choice revolving money, six-hundred-and-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars of circuit breaker revenue, and five-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars of our two-forty grant totaling a million-two-forty-eight-eight-thirty-four that we'd be applying to offset the twenty-six-million-dollar expenditure budget, netting us down to twenty-four-million-seven-fifty-two-nine-forty-one. So the bottom line is the change between the two years is a million-six-forty-one. But again, I would caution everybody not to assume that that's what's gonna get passed through. We still have to do more work with the numbers and the revenue to get to the real assessment and the real... What's really gonna pass through. And a lot's gonna change between now and when we get the final budget numbers and the revenue numbers as the next month unfolds. So all the items that the committee just approved, the additional asks that came through from the various school principals and pupil services are all factored in to the 2016 column. So all the numbers that we just added in totaling eight-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars are included in the twenty-six-million-oh-oh-one-seven-seventy-five. So the only other items that, you know, will impact this will be a review of the benefits, the health benefits and the employee benefits that, as that information comes forward, we'll adjust these numbers as well. And again, I'll take another look at the utility costs just to make sure that we're estimating appropriately for that. So unless there are other changes to the budget, that's kinda how we got to where we are today.
As Mr. Suter said, these are strictly preliminary numbers that we're working on. That's the process that we have to go through every year. And even when we do get to a preliminary budget, I'm sure that will change another two or three times before we get to a final budget to be voted on. But we'll continue taking it one step at a time. If there's a need for the subcommittee to meet between now and the 24th, I'll call one. Otherwise, we'll try to wrap up and get to a preliminary number for the 24th. And that's not a scheduled meeting at this point, so Dr. Crowe would need to have that posted for the 24th for a meeting. Mr. Nodquist, you have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to bring up, unfortunately, but it was in the paper, and we might get cut in the regional school transportation. I know Mr. Suter didn't talk about it, but that's a big hit if we get cut on the state budgets, regional transportation. Which I know you have no say, but that's what's on the plate and, you know, it'd be challenged with some lawsuits from regional districts like we happen to donate five-hundred dollars to this. But if we get cut in regional transportation, that's gonna be a big hit. So we'll have to deal with that if it doesn't come, if it doesn't, when it comes.
Yep. Thank you.
That reminds me, we did get a notification. Part of the cuts that the governor imposed as a result of the deficit at the state level was they reduced our current-year kindergarten grant. So the grant was, I'd say, eighty-five-thousand dollars, eighty-nine-thousand dollars. They cut twenty-thousand dollars out of that and notified us this week. So Karen had to amend the grant, and we're gonna have to deal with that as we go forward. But it's just one of those things that, you know, when they throw that at you mid-year, it's somewhat difficult to deal with.
Yeah, that's a cut for this year, not for next year.
Right, for the year we're in, right.
Right. Anyone else have any questions or comments they'd like to make in regards to what we've done tonight and how we're moving forward with this? All right, if not moving on, our next item is revolving student accounts, Lake Street tax IDs. Dr. Crowe?
This was a question that had been brought up at a previous meeting to be sure that the Lake Street parent group was using their own tax ID. And I've conferred with the principal, and Ms. Bullock assures me that yes, indeed, they do have their own tax ID.
Okay. That was a question that was brought up by the board, so everyone's satisfied that they do have their own number. Next item is statements for a school committee approval. In your packet you had from Dr. Zaleski, some, I think, four votes we have to take. Karen, is that correct? Is there anything you'd like to address?
No, I wanna make sure the board is clear on the...
Why don't you just give us a quick overview as to the reason for these?
Sure. So the statements that you have in front of you with the directed rationale come directly from the coordinated program review. Basically, if these statements get voted on tonight, we will change all handbooks accordingly, and then I will upload those handbooks to the reviewers at the state for their approval. I will also include this agenda, tonight's agenda, as well as the school committee approval statements as part of the upload, which is required for corrective action.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So we'll take them individually. I guess the first one is a revised school committee policy statement. It's in regards to gender language that has to be put in. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Angela, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. Any further questions or discussions? If not, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Also voted. Next, continuous notification requirement. This will bring the printed material into compliance with the federal laws and regulations. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Also voted. Third, equal access to extracurricular activities. This just brings us in compliance with the federal civil rights laws. Just encouraging all the students to participate. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heather, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Vinnie. Further discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Also voted. And last, non-discriminatory administration of scholarships, prizes, and rewards. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Vinnie, seconded?
Second.
Seconded by Angela. Further questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Also voted. Next item, intra-district school request, file number oh-one-two-one. You have that in your packet, Dr. Crowe?
I believe this is my first time doing an intra-district transfer request, but my understanding is this is a... So as you see in the packet, it's a pre-case student who's requesting being able to attend the school of the sibling that the sibling is already attending.
We've made these requests in the past where families have had another member going there. It's pretty standard. The only question... Do you know, has the principal approved this request?
I don't know if the principal has approved this request. I don't have anything in writing from the principal.
Chairman.
It might be in order... How does the board feel about taking the vote pending approval by the principal? Or would you prefer to table it until our meeting on the 24th?
Table it.
Take the vote.
We can take the vote.
Table it.
Can I get a question, Mr. Chairman, on that line, which I always ask of every principal who's gonna take in a child? How's this gonna affect the class size? If it's not, it's not, and whatever. So he's not here tonight, so...
Why don't we table it till the next meeting? Ron will be here at the next meeting. He'll be able to answer. Next thing you have in your packet is personnel information. I believe at your desk you had a revised one, updated. Anyone have any questions in regards to that? If not, next item was you had an enrollment sheet in your packet. Any questions? Non-school newsletters from a couple of the schools are in your packet. Our next item, hearing for visitors. Any visitors wish to be heard?
Good evening. My name is Byron Dean. I live in Spencer. I'm a parent of children at the school, the high school, and I'm also the president of the David Proudy High School Athletics Booster Club. I'd like to, if I could, speak from both of those roles. First, as a parent. I've been sitting here for a couple hours by my own choice. I've enjoyed every minute of it, thank you. And I've watched you folks approve three-quarters of a million dollars in spending increase requests, albeit preliminary. I realize that. I watched you just now propose voting on a child transfer without any formal documentation that it's approved by the principal of the school to... Is accepting or losing the child? I'm not sure that...
I may not have listened correctly. We did not vote on it. We tabled it so that the principal can be here and answer our questions.
Okay, thank you. I stand corrected. I heard Mr. Suter, in his dialogue with his explanation of where numbers came from to date, express the need for other ways to find revenue. I can think of some ways, and I think there's many other ways that are happening today, by students, by school organizations, by boosters. Yet, a program that fundraises for the benefit of the athletic program, to my understanding, is not okay, apparently. I understand you have new rules because we're under the watch by the state. And I watched our legal counsel stand up here and wholeheartedly say that he thought it was regretful that these young kids can't participate in the camp this year? I'll tell you what's regretful. What's regretful is how you guys handled this. Seriously, we're talking a few hundred bucks fundraising dollars. Chris?
Excuse me, sir. This is not a give and take. You're not gonna address questions to members?
You can call me Byron.
You've got about two minutes left.
Great.
Finish your statement, and you're gonna be done.
Great. And remember, I'm speaking as a parent, please. I'm not even... I'm not directly involved with this program at the present time. I don't have kids participating in it, but I feel like I've been punched in the stomach, honestly. I have about a minute and a half left, so I'm gonna change hats and put on my Booster Club hat. I can't speak for the Booster Club because anything that we decide is voted on, just like it is here. But I would like to be part of the solution, if we could. If you have financial concerns about how money goes in and out of school budgets from these volunteer fundraising programs, I will approach the Booster Club to see if we can find a way to become a financial funnel or whatever so that these programs can continue because I think it's absurd that this program was stopped. And I worry about many other programs that we have that coaches and other volunteer organizations associated with the school conduct. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Okay, seeing none. Next item is school committee comments and future agenda topics. Anyone have anything they would like to bring up? Mr. Clouty?
Mr. Chairman, at our next meeting on the 24th, just for our agenda, we're gonna require an executive session to begin that meeting.
Okay.
To meet again with actual benefits.
Then what I'll do is I'll post that to start at six, and we'll...
That'd be fine.
We'll regio schedule at seven to make sure we have enough time.
That'd be... Yeah, we're gonna probably need that time.
Okay.
Also, if at our next meeting, we could continue with the preliminary budget, and at least I'd like to see the administration come back to the board with an overview of the capital requests that were made because that was totally left out of the operations budget, as it should be. But we really need to present that to the public so that they have an understanding of what the requests were and the mentality, what they were, and what they were for, and, you know, what we intend to do with that, so, as a board.
Okay.
We're gonna handle that, so...
Thank you. Anyone else have any issues that they would like to have on the agenda? Mr. Nodquist?
At some point in time, would the superintendent give us an update on the plow truck, about when it's coming? I'm sure we could use it now, but if she gives us an update when it's... When we're gonna get it? Oh, what's the story is?
All right, anyone else? Heather?
I was just wondering, where are we at with the acceptable use policy? Have we made progress there?
Dr. Crowe?
Because a lot of the storms prevented the meetings of the tech policy subcommittee, so we're sort of backlogged on those meetings at this point.
Okay.
And Mr. Torrey's not here tonight, so I'm not able to ask him how close we are to that next meeting.
Anyone else? Angela?
I just have a request. Is it possible for me to get our packet electronically? Because it's a lot of paper, and I have a very small apartment, and I already have not enough room for this paperwork. And I don't personally own a scanner to scan all of this into my computer, so if... It comes elec... I mean, they type it up electronically, so if I could just get it as an email, I would really appreciate it.
Now, Dr. Crowe?
Yes, we're moving towards the electronic age, actually, as we speak. We're trying to do that, Ms. Napton, so we will be on that, actually. I'll do an introduction in a minute and let you know the person who's gonna be in charge of that.
Thank you.
In regards to what Mr. Clouty brought up for the capital request, the chair would like to entertain having a subcommittee for the capital items. The budget subcommittee had come to the conclusion that we would bring forward the item for security as our only capital request for this budget, but that we would seek to only capital request for this budget, but that we would seek to have a budget subcommittee formed that would deal with all of the other capital items that we're confronted with, so that we could do just what Mr. Clouty suggested, get it out there, get it in the public's hands so they can see where we're at, maybe also get into the, into the funnel with the towns with their capital programs and requests. I had talked to Mike Ethia, who has a pretty good working knowledge of all the heating and the boiler situations we had. He's offered to be willing to serve on that subcommittee, and I am absolutely tapped out and have no time left for it, but we do need some other members to step up that would be willing to serve with Mike. Doesn't have to be a four or five person, a two or three person, a subcommittee to work with Mike on the capital request. So if there's anyone interested tonight, you can let me know afterwards. At the next meeting, hopefully, we'll have two or three people will be willing to do that, and I'll make an appointment at the next meeting for the subcommittee.
Thank you.
And we already spoke about the meeting for the 24th to be posted.
Yeah.
Executive at 6:00, regular at 7:00.
Yep, yeah. All right. Other than that, the only comment that I'll make in regards to the response is that we do regret having to go forward and do the report that council has requested, and this board and the superintendent fully supports all activities for the kids in our district, but at the same time, we have an obligation to see that the district adheres to all the rules and regulations and state statutes that have to be adhered to. And unfortunately, that may not be the case, and that's what we're gonna try to find out. So a motion to adjourn?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Kurt, seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those who voted.